Because it was just about ready to get into the mom always liked you best.
That we always go there. We always go there. And that's always kind of spoils things.
Exactly.
My family does that.
Your family does that, too?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Mom likes you best.
Yeah. Well, my mom did like my sister best.
My mom didn't.
My family and my dad.
Oh, wow.
Oh, wow.
That's funny.
Guard for life, that's all.
Yeah. I'm a council thanks to the vacation approved with my sister. Oh, all right. Should we share a cabin or should we have separate cabins?
Share the cabin and be happy and trip.
Oh. Are you still speaking?
About a minute or so out.
We shared a bedroom as children, so yes, we're very used to close doors. That's what we do, too.
Yeah, I guess we do, too.
And I threw myself on the side of the room.
Chris comes out now, Sharon.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. You all look so nice. Hey, who are you?
Oh.
Hi, Wells. Karen, I've never seen your hair grow back. Oh, well, it's a last minute panic kill you thing. You know how that goes.
It looks good.
Let's make it twenty-five. Oh, good. I'll do this all the time then. But first, the wrinkles back.
Yes.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the virtual joint study session of Lakewood City Council and the Lakewood Reinvestment Authority at seven P M. On August second, twenty twenty-one. Uh, you may be wondering why this is going and you're seeing all the same people. And that is because this body acts as not only the city council, but as the Lakewood Reinvestment Authority. So we are the joint group tonight and have two opportunities for public input. Based upon the presentations before us, and I will acknowledge that there were no comments on Lakewood Speaks tonight. So if you'd like to participate, the dial in number is one six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight. With an A webinar I D of nine nine eight six nine five eight five four seven nine. Press pound after entering the webinar I D, then pound once more to join. Uh, once you're in, you can press star nine to request to speak and star six to unmute. With that, looks like Madam Clerk, will you please read the roll tonight?
Paul?
Here.
Abel?
Here.
Vincent?
Here.
Bootwine?
Here.
Vito?
Here.
Skilling?
Here.
Springsteen? Franks?
Here.
Johnson?
I am here.
Lepir?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
You have the forum.
Great. Thank you very much. As I mentioned tonight, this is a joint session. We are covering a, a pretty heavy lift, a lot of, uh, a lot of information tonight, but I, I think we can get through it in a meaningful timeframe. And um, would like to just mention, you know, this is something that city councils twenty, twenty-five years ago had to weigh into. And really try to, you know, look into the future of our city and, and see, you know, what types of tools or options or, or things that uh, we might want to enable or empower could be available. And this is kind of a similar discussion. So with that, I'm going to kick it off to somebody who's had a lot of face time with the Lakewood City Council and Reinvestment Authority of late, Mr. Robert Smith.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that very much. Took a second here to get uh, logged into the meeting in here. Uh, Bernie, that if you wouldn't mind allowing Cory. Oh, there's Cory. I see him down on the, on the bottom there as well. So thank you so much for uh, having the opportunity to have us with you here tonight. Um, we've got two items on the agenda. The first is an introduction of our special counsel. Um, you may recall that back in twenty twenty, just before the pandemic, we were getting ready to do uh, these kinds of conversations and, and they got pushed aside by the pandemic, obviously. Uh, and so what we wanted to do right now is uh, acknowledge the fact that you folks authorized the uh, the, the hiring or the engaging of a special counsel to talk about the expansion of the uh, L R A board uh, moving forward. And uh, we uh, put out an R F P and went through an extensive uh, process and, and I think uh, delivered uh, probably the best folks in the uh, in the world for this. So um, with that, I will introduce Mr. Corey Hoffman. Um, he's uh, one of the uh, urban renewal attorneys that works with a number of uh, of uh, communities along the front range. And, and so he's very knowledgeable about that. And I'll let him say a few words or so and then, and then we'll move on to the meat of the topic in there. Cory, you got uh, some things to say?
Well, good evening. Uh, I am not one to do a long introduction, so I'll be brief and say, my name's Corey Hoffman. I'm with the law firm of Hoffman, Harper, Wilson and Carberry. And along with my um, with Catherine Sellers, who is not here this night, this evening. Um, we uh, look forward to working with you as special counsel for urban renewal. Um, for those of you that don't know about our firm, our firm um, does almost nothing but local government representation. So we don't represent, for example, private developers. We focus on the government side, on the local government side. Uh, we represent uh, a number of cities and towns and um, also urban renewal authorities. And I represent urban renewal authorities both that, as you do, have the city council acting as the urban renewal authority board, and also some urban renewal authorities that have a separate um, board acting as its, as its urban renewal authority. Um, and so I feel fairly confident that um, if there, if there's a question that comes up that I haven't heard before, I know where to find it. And I'm hoping I can uh, provide some meaningful legal advice to help the Lakewood Reinvestment Authority get to where it wants to go.
Thank you very much. It's great to have you and we appreciate the introduction. And with that, I, I would be remiss if we didn't just uh, open this up for public input. We have that listed on the agenda. Uh, Mr. Smith, you have anything else to add to this?
Not on this item. We'll go to the next item. I've got a presentation. But on the introduction of the uh, of the special counsel, no more to add other than I'm glad we got uh, Mr. Hoffman and his organization on board.
Okay. So if there's anybody, I see two people in the holding. If anybody wishes to speak on this topic, which is clearly just the introduction of our uh, attorney and, and their team, please press star nine right now to raise your hand. So anybody in as a participant in the attendees that wishes to weigh in, please press star nine. Then once again, we press star six to unmute. Give it a quick second here. Okay, going once, going twice. Go ahead and shut that down and we will move into uh, kind of the meat and potatoes of the evening, item four, and go back to um, Mr. Smith. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mayor. Uh, I'm sorry, Chair, Chair Paul and Commissioners of the L R A. Um, I've got a presentation that's on PowerPoint here, so let me shift over my screen, make sure that uh, you can see what I'm seeing over here. Um, can everybody see that uh, title slide on there? This is joint study session of the city council and the L R A. Thumbs up from anybody? We're good? All right. We will continue on. Uh, ostensibly, the, the point of this conversation is to talk a little bit about urban renewal overall. Um, let's talk about the L A uh, L R A board composition and potential expansion. So with that in mind, we will move on. So uh, the city councils express some interest in exploring the formation of new urban renewal areas within Lakewood. Uh, the approval of such areas would uh, be uh, through the Lakewood City Council. So if we were to declare a new urban renewal area other than the four that we already work with, um, that would be a decision of the Lakewood City Council. Um, the Lakewood Redevelopment Authority, the L R A, of course, oversees and manages, as I mentioned, four existing U R As. We'll talk a little bit about those in just a moment. Um, the approval of an urban renewal development plan for any new area would be a decision of the city uh, council and the L R A board. That's the plan for those areas. Not just the areas themselves. And then the L R A board uh, would need to expand by several seats uh, before it could consider an urban renewal or redevelopment plan for a new area. So with that in mind, um, I'll talk just a little bit about what uh, we in Echin, or excuse me, in uh, urban renewal refer to as House Bill fifteen thirteen forty-eight. We ought to be referring to it as the Colorado Urban Redevelopment Fairness Act, because that's really how it's known these days, but we still refer to it as thirteen forty-eight. It was passed in the twenty fifteen legislative session and uh, it was enacted on the first of January in twenty sixteen. We're in compliance with thirteen forty-eight or the uh, Colorado Urban Redevelopment Fairness Act now, and will continue to be in, in uh, compliance with that as we move along. But to be in compliance with an expanding area, we'd have to expand the board. So you might recognize these uh, relatively attractive people that are up on the screen right now. Those are your current L R A Board of Commissioners. Um, and if folks are wondering how those pictures got in that order, uh, it's uh, Chair Paul to the left. And then alphabetically, from left to right. So you have a, a Chair, Commissioner Abel over there on the left, and you've got uh, Sharon Vincent over on the right. If we were to expand the board, um, we would expand it. It would look a lot like this. And you probably recognize those fine folks that are uh, on there. So there would be eleven chairs for the city council representatives uh, that are served on the urban renewal board. But there would be at least three more seats that would be there. There would be Jefferson County. The actual county itself would have a representative there. The Jeffco Public Schools would have a representative on that board. And then there would be a representative from all of the special districts. So all of the uh, metro districts, the, the fire uh, district, all of, all of the special districts that are associated with the urban renewal area. They would elect one representative uh, to represent all of those special districts together. Let's talk just a little bit about the areas so that we get reminded of where those are at. One of the other things of thirteen forty-eight is, is that we have a compliance where when we get to the end of the increment capture period, and I'll talk more about that in just a moment. But when we get to the end of that period, we want to have um, yeah, expense all of the dollars that were collected in that urban renewal area during its twenty-five year lifespan. So that's something that we'll be doing here in the future with the L R A board. But the area that we've got right here that we're talking about on the map on the right, you can see that big thick line that runs on the lower, the uh, left third of the screen. That's Wadsworth Boulevard. Colfax is, Colfax is running east to west along the bottom. And that area is what was commonly referred to as the Creekside Shopping Center. Uh, many of you may recall that around the, uh, the turn of the century, around two thousand, um, an old uh, Kmart store was converted over into a new Walmart facility. And there was a lot of drainage uh, improvements that were put into that area. There's a, a creek that runs through that. And a lot of the urban renewal dollars were used to facilitate the development or the redevelopment of that drainage system. The next area that we can talk about is the uh, West Alameda Corridor Reinvestment Area. Um, about five hundred and eighty-nine acres. There's actually two urban renewal areas. There's one right over Belmar proper. And then there's one that runs all the way from Sheridan over to Belmar Park. And you can see how it uh, runs from side to side there. On that map, the big thick line that's about a third of the way through, towards the left, that's Wadsworth. And then, of course, Alameda runs through the middle of it. And then that dark area over on the right, that's the next community over. And in this case, it happens to be Denver. But that dark area to the right is the next community over. And of course, um, we can't declare urban renewal areas in other jurisdictions. So um, any, any new boundary that we have would end right there at Sheridan, because we couldn't go over into Denver, because that's that next community over. Um, the West Colfax Avenue, this is the youngest of our urban renewal areas. Um, and we have until about twenty thirty that the increment capture would be complete. And again, we'll talk about that a little bit more later. Eight hundred and thirteen acres runs all the way from Sheridan all the way out to Sims, along Colfax. And generally, it's a, it's a block or two to the north or south of, of Colfax in most places. There's some places where it goes a little bit further, but that's the uh, that's that area uh, that is the uh, West Colfax urban renewal corridor. Now, I'll mention real quickly that urban renewal authorities have some different powers than city councils do. Um, there's a variety of them, but the two biggies that come to mind, one is the tax increment financing. I've mentioned increment a couple of times. And as I said, we'll go over a little bit more what that means. But what it allows us to do is to finance improvements into the area based on the increment we will capture in the future. And that's tax increment financing. Quick definition right here. We'll go over a little bit more and I'll go through a little bit more slowly down, down the road. Um, the other one that, that is there is eminent domain. So we're allowed to acquire a property within the urban renewal area using eminent domain for the purposes of blight mitigation. Everything that has to do with urban renewal is about blight mitigation, mitigating the blighting factors that are in those areas. Uh, using eminent domain to purchase real estate is probably not the most efficient way to buy real estate. But it is a power that urban renewal authorities can exercise if they so choose. The statutory authorization, um, in Colorado revised statute, and it's essentially chapter thirty-one or article thirty-one of the Colorado revised statutes um, has to do with special districts and urban renewal in specific. The purpose of an urban renewal authority really is to eliminate slum and blight. That's the whole purpose. It's not to do job creation. It's not to do economic development. It's not to increase tax revenues. It's really to eliminate those blighting factors that are, that are happening inside the area. So when we get our mindset going as the L R A, we're thinking about eliminating blighting conditions. Generally, however, when you eliminate those blighting conditions, there is job creation. There's economic development. There's an increase in the tax revenue. Because when those blighting conditions go away, investment comes into the area. And that's something that we like to promote in as much as it can be promoted. But again, blight mitigation is the, is the key to what we're trying to get done here. So some success stories, you see it kind of going around the dial there. Up in the upper left is the uh, the Creekside Walmart, as we, as we mentioned. You can see over there Lamar Station Plaza and the public plaza that's out uh, in front of that. The station betterment program that uh, happened over the Oak Street Station. You can see the, the walking boats uh, there. Um, then down in the lower right-hand corner, Alameda Streetscape Project, which we just completed last year in terms of installing some sidewalks and, and landscaping along Alameda. Uh, and then, of course, the Belmar Project, and that's represented by the uh, the Hyatt House Hotel that's, that was uh, built there in twenty seventeen. Because when it opened. So when we start a new urban renewal area, we started off with uh, what's called a condition survey, or a lot of people refer to it as the blight study. And we've, we've talked about blight studies here quite a bit over the last few months, but the same process happens for uh, urban renewal areas. A letter goes out to all of the property owners that says, hey, we're, we're looking for uh, slum and blighting conditions in the area. Um, and your property is being included in that study area where we're looking to do that. So then folks from that third party, that independent third-party uh, company go out and they review all of the blighting conditions. Generally, from the public rights of way, so they're not uh, entering properties and whatnot, but they're taking a look to see which of those blighting conditions are applicable to those properties inside that study area. So again, we've talked about these statutory blighting conditions, but we'll kind of run through them. There are eleven of them altogether. There's deteriorating and our deteriorated structures. There's a defective and inadequate street layout. Faulty lot layout in relation to size adequacy, ex-illibility or usefulness, unsanitary or unsafe conditions. The deterioration of the site and/or other improvements, uh, unusual topography or inadequate public improvements or utilities. Effective or unusual conditions of the title rendering the title non-marketable. The conditions that endanger life or property by fire or by other causes, buildings that are unsafe or unhealthy for people. Uh, environmental contamination of buildings and the property, uh, and the existence of health, safety and welfare factors requiring high levels of municipal services or substantial underutilization or vacancy of those buildings and sites or improvements. So that's what they're looking for in the condition survey. That's what they're looking for in the blight survey. All of those things are further defined in the statute. And so those come together in those, in those blight reports or those, those study reports, the condition survey reports to determine whether these conditions exist, are existed within a study area. So this one I'll run through a little bit slow because it's uh, there's a lot of complexity to this, but I want to make sure folks understand this uh, fairly well. Um, the boundaries of the urban renewal area have to be drawn as narrowly as possible to achieve the goals of the Colorado Urban Renewal Law. So there's, there's uh, some leeway in terms of how the areas are drawn, but basically it's supposed to be as narrow as possible. So if you looked at everything to the right of that green box there, uh, that's kind of a map of a hypothetical or fictional example of a city that I, that I put up there. You can see to the far right, that yellow area, that's the next community over. So uh, if, if this were Lakewood, to, to the left of Main Boulevard, Central Avenue running through the middle of it. This is how we might work with a new urban renewal area. An area that I've just put in pink represents a lot of residential properties. You can see that from the tighter uh, tighter street layout of the smaller property sizes. Generally speaking, we don't want to include uh, a residential in an urban renewal area. We certainly can't. And there is some residential in the urban renewal areas that we already have existing, but for the most part, we want to really work with commercial properties. So over on this side here, if we said this was the area we were going to study, so say, let's say from Twentieth Street to the north, all the way to Zero Street at the bottom, between Central and Main. We would do that condition survey and they would start to look for those eleven conditions of light on each and every one of those properties out there. Let's say all these properties that we've highlighted in green here have, let's say, six conditions or seven conditions of blight on those properties. They don't have to be the same conditions. They don't have to encompass all eleven of the, of the conditions of light, but let's just say those properties have seven conditions of light. Theoretically, we could draw an urban renewal area around the whole area that we looked at, just because of those properties, because we make the, make the number that we need. But if we only had those blighting factors on those properties, we'd have to probably make that area a little bit tighter. But let's say these properties have four conditions of light on them. Don't have to be the same ones, don't have to be all eleven, but they have, you know, four conditions each of those properties. Let's say these is here have three conditions of light. So there's, there's blighting conditions and, and throughout the area, all of them have varying levels for each property. When you add all those together, you start to see that in that study area, most of the properties have conditions of light. And the area as a whole has more conditions of light than seven or six or any of the individual properties. And we might draw that whole area. Now, you'll notice that some of those are blocked out. Theoretically, those could be included in the urban renewal area. Theoretically, they could be excised from it, but generally speaking, the urban, or the area that we've looked at there could be included in the urban renewal authority area if it were to be declared. So what happens to the property values when you declare an urban renewal area? A lot of property owners say, oh, my gosh, my property values are going to go down. Well, there's actually been no studies that have shown a, a decrease in valuation just based on the fact that urban renewal was declared on the property. Uh, some studies have shown increases. And generally speaking, what happens is, is that because you've got an urban renewal authority, there's an understanding that there's an ability to work on the public improvements and that there's a local government entity trying to target investment into that urban renewal area. And therefore, hopefully, the property values start to go up based on the fact that we start to redevelop and take care of those mitigating, or mitigate those blight factors. I'll go through this a little bit slowly as well, because this has to do with a lot of, lot of math, and I'll try to make the math as simple as possible. But over on the left-hand side, the vertical column, you can see it starts with a million down at the bottom, goes up to eighteen million. This is just a hypothetical example of how the, the increment would go. So once we've declared that there's a blighted area, the increment of the tax is what we're trying to capture. And that's the property tax that we'll be talking about here. So could include sales tax, but for the most part, we're talking about property tax or the value of the property. Along the bottom axis, you can see that it's uh, zero through twenty-six years. Urban renewal authorities are authorized for twenty-five years in the state of Colorado, so most of them go that twenty-five years. I'm going to put up here a chart that shows kind of two sweeping uh, colored lines. One is the yellow, that's the base. And the blue is the increment that's on there. So the base, as you can see, starts off in year what would be negative two on the scale. So two to the left of zero starts off at a million dollars. You can see that the value of the base goes up over time. Those are market conditions and they increase. So when folks say, wait a second, when you declare an urban renewal area, the property tax value goes down to zero. That's not true. That's not true at all. The base is still intact. Does the base move over time? Is it frozen? No, it's not frozen. It can move with the market conditions and increase or decrease based on what uh, what's happening in the market. The blue area is the increment. That means we did some kind of improvement within the properties in the urban renewal area. So an example of that might be when we did Villa Italia, the old Villa Italia Mall. We tore down Villa Italia Mall and we built Belmar over the top of it. Let's put some numbers to that, real simple numbers to make it easy. Let's say the land value underneath the old Villa Italia Mall was a million dollars. And then let's say the buildings that were the Villa Italia Mall were also worth a billion dollars. So two million dollars is what that was worth before the urban renewal area was declared. So that two million dollars is in the base or in that yellow part on the, on the chart there. If we tear down the Villa Italia Mall and build Belmar over the top of it, the buildings at Belmar are now worth two million dollars. So the entirety of the property is three million dollars. The increment between the two million dollars in the base and the three million dollar current value is a million dollars. And so the urban renewal authority captures the incremental property tax values on that million dollars of increment. The two million dollars in the base, those dollars still go to the entities that were collecting the, the before. So the county gets the, the, the dollars that were in the base. The school district gets the dollars that were in the base. All of the special districts get those dollars. It's just the, the property taxes on the increment or that million dollars of additional value that gets captured there. So you can see over the course of time, the base goes up based on the market conditions. Generally, real estate goes up. The increment value goes up. And hopefully, we get incremental improvements on lots of properties throughout the urban renewal area. So that that increment gets fairly large over that twenty-five years. If we know kind of some predictability on that, we can use that revenue stream to predict a, an ability to pay back some kind of financing mechanism if we wanted to. So hopefully, that kind of puts that base and increment into place there. The other thing that you hear a lot of times is T I F or tax increment financing. That's the financing based on that increment. So some folks say the increment is the T I F. Not quite. The T I F is the tax increment financing based on the increment. So why use increment and T I F altogether? Well, first of all, the increment is not a new tax. There's no new taxes that get imposed on these properties. It's really a matter of where the dollars of the existing property taxes go and for what they're used. So there's no new taxes in the urban renewal area. Uh, there may be extraordinary public improvement requirements may be needed. In that Villa Italia example, for uh, example that I was using just a moment ago, we built an entire street grid where there wasn't a street grid before. All of the drainage and the uh, the wet utilities that went in there. Lots of public improvements were required to make Belmar come about. Um, the increment doesn't increase tax rates on existing property owners. So if you're in the urban renewal area, your tax rate is exactly the same as it was before you entered in there. So that, there, there's not a raise in the tax, as it were. The increment doesn't require that property owners outside of that urban renewal area contribute to the project. So the property taxes of folks in the south part of Lakewood are not contributing to the urban renewal area along Colfax. Just the property owners that are in that uh, urban renewal area. Uh, the increase captures that additional value that's created by the private investment, and then it's able to be put back into the project or into the area. And uh, then growth pays its own way, more so in an urban renewal area than if the urban renewal area weren't in place. So how does that increment work? You start with a blighted property that's out there. And the increment district is created or the urban renewal authority area is created, the tax base is established. And so those regular tax levies go out. If you don't improve on the property, then there is no increment. And so that, the taxes that might be captured there are zero, because there's no improvement. So if you improve the property and you redevelop it, the additional value of that property is what creates the increment. And that's what uh, creates that tax, uh, the uh, the increment tax or the tax capture there. So the increased property value times the regular tax rate can increase, is uh, equal to that increment uh, that we're talking about. So in a way to think about that might be is if you had a house that was worth four hundred thousand dollars and now it's worth five hundred thousand dollars. The tax levies or the, the mill levies on your property remain the same, but the total dollars paid out increased because the value of the property went up. That incremental value of the property is what creates that uh, conditional value there. So tax increment financing, the uh, urban renewal authority receives a share of that district or that property area, uh, and potentially sales tax revenues as well. Uh, the U R A makes a catalyst investment into a building or activity into the area. That in turn uh, results in incremental property value going up and incremental property tax, which then goes back to the urban renewal. And that cycle can repeat within the urban renewal area during that twenty-five year period. Again, always for the purposes of trying to mitigate the blighting conditions that exist in that urban renewal authority. So a couple of ways to look uh, about whether these uh, urban renewal areas make some sense is that if you think about is that if you think about absent the investment of the urban renewal authority, development may not happen. So if not but for the investment of the urban renewal authority, investment may not happen, development may not happen. Without that development, the blighting conditions perpetuate and the area decays even further. With the URNV investment, development occurs, the blighting conditions are mitigated and the incremental increase is available to the URA to reinvest in the district and again to remedy those blighting conditions. So a couple of ways you can use that tax increment financing. One is bonding. You can go out and sell bonds based on the fact that you can pay back those bonds using the increment that you're going to capture into the future. Another way is to do a reimbursement agreement. In other words, a developer, a private investment invests into the area and we can reimburse them based on those increment, you know, the increment that we capture into the future. There are a couple of other ways, but I don't really want to, you know, load down the conversation too much. What I do want to say is is that using that increment and that increment growth over time, we can potentially finance blight mitigation method or, you know, methods that would happen in the urban renewal ahead of time. So applying that TIP, when does it make sense to do that? It's the but for analysis. If we don't invest in this, then the 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 project won't go forward, it won't move forward there. So a lot of that is is determined by the fact that you've got a plan in place, you've got an urban renewal area already declared, the project's consistent with the plan, the goals of the area, and then the project wouldn't occur, the development wouldn't occur absent the tax increment support, the but for. So if not but for the urban renewal authority's investment, the project wouldn't move forward and that development wouldn't. Urban renewal statutes, interestingly enough, don't require that those improvements have to be in the public or the public right of way. They don't have to be roads and things like that. They can be in the commercial properties there. All they have to do is mitigate blight or eliminate those blighting conditions, remedy those. Another way to look at it is the gap analysis, and this happens a lot in redevelopment. Because when you buy, let's say that you wanted to to buy a property with a building on it, well, the person selling you that wants to get paid for the building and the land, even if you just want to use the land. If you tear down the building, you have to pay for the building, that costs money. You tear down the building, that costs money, and then you start building again. So the cost of redevelopment can oftentimes exceed doing something on a green field somewhere else where you don't have to tear down the property and you don't have to pay for an existing building. So that gap or that distance between those two things, oftentimes the urban renewal authority can help fill in that gap financially so the project can move forward and the blighting conditions can be remediated. An example of that is kind of the CU Health Center down there on Ninth and Colorado. A lot of the buildings came down and the urban renewal authority in there helped to rebuild those things up using that increment. Another place would be like if you've got environmental contamination. You think about the Gates Project down off of I-25 and Broadway. There was a lot of environmental mitigation that had to happen, so the urban renewal authority used those dollars to to help mitigate those blighting conditions. Or maybe you need oversized or regional infrastructure. When I was in Thornton, we built an interchange up there for the hospital at about 98th Thornton Parkway Interchange, and that kind of regional infrastructure does cost a lot of money, but the increment can be used to budge it. I will mention real quickly that there are two parts to this equation. One is the statutory authority, the things the statute say you can do that are legal or that you can move forward with and whatnot. And then there's the political will. It's the it's the folks in the local community, we want to do X, we want to do Y, we want this project, we don't want this project. Even though it's statutorily allowed, may not be a part of what the political makeup of the of the area is. So it's really where those two things overlap is where those projects can can exist. So the path ahead, obviously, we're doing this study session discussion tonight. What we really want from the the council and the LRA board this evening is direction from the council and the LRA to expand the LRA board. If we get that direction going forward, then we'll come back to you with a resolution at a public hearing at a future meeting. And then that resolution will essentially say, we're going to expand the board and this is how we're going to expand the board and that's what it means. And then there's, then after that, we can do the exploration of of new urban renewal areas. We can talk about the changes in the existing urban renewal areas if we want to, and we're going to talk about essentially how we're going to make certain that the the resource allocation plans meet up with the end of the increment capture at those years you saw in those different urban renewal areas in the beginning of the presentation. So with all of that in mind, I'll mention that if we were to adopt a new urban renewal area, there would be the appointment of the new board members, there would be negotiations with those taxing entities to go forward, there would be that light study and condition survey of the area that's appropriate for that, would be looking for those 11 categories of light, and there would be a public hearing, city council and the LRA board would be talking about those projects and blighting conditions. We'd be talking about adoption of the urban renewal plan, and that urban renewal plan for that new area would have defined planned area boundaries, it would set goals, and it would authorize the TIP and/or eminent domain in those those projects. And all of that brings us to the the ending slide here, which is questions and discussions. Happy to answer any questions that either the city council or the LRA board has on any of these materials that we brought forward tonight. Let me unshare my screen and.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And before we go to questions and discussions from council, I want to make sure that the community has an opportunity. So if you are in the meeting and you wish to ask any questions based upon this presentation, please press star nine to request to speak and then star six to unmute. Also, let the record reflect that Commissioner Springsteen has joined the meeting. Okay, so anybody wish to speak? Star nine? Raise your hand. Give it another second, going once, going twice. We will close public input and then just keep in mind, council, that first part of the direction that we'd like to. To an agreement to either move forward with that expansion or not knowing that there's a public process afterwards that will continue to take place. So Commissioner Johnson, then Commissioner Labear.
Thank you. Robert, this is really a brilliant kind of an idea, and I mean, the whole way to create a URA. I do have some questions. Has anybody ever, there's been a lot of concern about the blight and it continues in some areas. Has there ever been any suggestion to perhaps have an increase of taxes on those properties that are blighted as an incentive for them to clean it up?
There have been discussions about those those kinds of things, but those generally don't fall into urban renewal law, just so you are sure you're aware. Some communities do vacancy taxes or those sorts of things where there is a penalty for for keeping the property vacant and that sort of a thing. And we've had, you know, I would say casual discussions about that over the years and never a really a serious movement towards towards doing those kinds of things where there would be a penalty for having those blighting conditions.
Okay, I would hope that at some point Lakewood would consider that kind of thing. I think it is more proactive. When an area has a condition study and it is determined to be blighted, generally, do the people that maybe are affected like this, if they have property that that is determined that is blighted, needs to be taken down, are they generally willing sellers and can they appeal the process?
There are, there's a lot of variation in terms of the seller makeup and how people respond to these kinds of things. I'll point out to to you and the public, I'm always open and available for conversations about what the urban renewal authority can and can't do, what the conditions are in the areas where where these things are being considered, and is there an appellate process? That's one of those things that I'd rather get some legal definition on in terms of can they work with these these sorts of things. Generally speaking, that that doesn't happen, but maybe we can have a weigh-in real quickly on that. Corey, do you?
Certainly, they they can be challenged, but if the if the city does its plan correctly, it is extremely difficult to challenge because you're basing it on an opinion as to whether the blight conditions exist. So as long as you cross all your i's and dot all your t's, so to speak, in the urban renewal plan adoption process, it's difficult to challenge. And I might add that in response to the question about voluntary acquisition, there are many, many urban renewal authorities that do not use the tool of eminent domain at all. So state legislature in 2006 made it much more difficult for renewal authorities to exercise the power of eminent domain, and many simply don't. So just because an area is is designated as an urban renewal area does not automatically mean the tool of eminent domain will be utilized.
Do people usually get a fair market price? And how is determined?
Yeah, essentially, that's what's determined is a fair market price would be there if a property were to be acquired either by an independent party or by the urban renewal authority if they if they went forward with that. And that's the the values of those properties are determined through appraisals of the property, through appraisers that have all of the appropriate licensure with the state to evaluate the values of those properties.
Okay, you mentioned expanding the board by three seats. Is there a cost to Lakewood for that? Who pays for them?
Is that a cost per se to expand the board, other than that we we need to have room to have three more people involved with that? So on the Zoom Zoom situation, it's fairly easy to add three more people on there when we get back into the council chambers and the and the physicality of that. Some of the other areas in the in the state that have done this expansion have really worked with that, you know, where do we put three more chairs and how do we get computers up and running? And I will mention real quickly that some of them have chosen not just to go to three, but to go four, so that there's an odd number on their board. So generally speaking, city councils already have an odd number. If you add three to that odd number, you get an even number, and so they voluntarily go with a fourth seat on the on the board. That's just one of those things.
No, I agree, it's better if it's an odd number. When I look at the people that you're suggesting for the seats, one from Jefferson County, would that be a county commissioner or who would, who do you anticipate to fill that seat?
Yeah, those are required by the 13 or 38, 1438, 1348, excuse me, legislation. Those are the the seats that are required. On the county side, there can be a little bit of variance, but most of the time it's a county commissioner. On the school, one, it has to be a school board member. And then the special districts, the special districts themselves select who would be their representative on in that seat.
But if I could add to that, the special district representative is required to be an elected official of one of the districts. So the only one of the three that is not required to be an elected official is the county representative. It can be, but it is not required to be.
Okay, so then House Bill 1348, that's really what we're going off of, is that we have to expand because of that particular piece of legislation, correct?
Correct. You you are, you are not required to expand unless you modify an existing plan or adopt a new plan. But I think what your staff is suggesting is to voluntarily expand the board in advance of either modifying an existing plan or adopting a new plan. But that is voluntary to do it in advance.
Okay, well, it looks like there's a great deal of interest in increasing urban renewal areas. Let me just say, I've got a little bit of concern about the three members. If they are not elected officials, there's a real incentive, in all honesty, for the schools, the special districts, and the county to see property taxes go up because they they will get more money. And I'm concerned if people aren't elected and we are doing people that are more bureaucratic in nature, that are going to be defining tax increases, that just doesn't feel good to me. Please help me understand that unless I've got that wrong.
Commissioner, I could just hearken back to the requirements were laid out in the statute by the state legislature, and and they put the kind of brackets around who serves and how they serve. And if you recall during these conversations, the the city was quite active in the legislative legislative committee trying to educate and and share some of the potential concerns or pitfalls with what could happen by the expansion. But there was some great desire, I think, amongst the state legislator because of some actors in some areas that weren't kind of doing things above the board that drew a lot of attention to this process. So that's how we got to where we're at with who will be on it and how they're on it.
Yeah, I guess typical, that's all I can say. What is the role of the city in blight? Because I have noticed that there are properties that are blighted and code enforcement is not actually out there to incentivize, to find, to encourage people to get to a point where their property is not blighted. I would just like to see us stop it to begin with, do everything we can to be proactive rather than to figure out a way, after all these properties are blighted, how to expand the URA. Could somebody please talk to me about the role of this city in code enforcement?
Code enforcement is complaint-driven. That is how they respond to issues in the city. I think and Commissioner Labear has his hand up, and I know he's got a few questions, so I was going to go there next. But we've talked in the past about upping our ordinances related to properties and, you know, certainly making rules more challenging. There was also a discussion about having a vacancy tax. I think Commissioner Abel brought that forth and there was some research going on. So there's some tools, but as always, code enforcement is complaint-driven and that is, you know, how we've operated for forever and that's what is in play. Be happy to go to Commissioner Labear if you have one more question.
Done. That's nice that code enforcement is complaint-driven, but we have blighted some properties in Ward Two that didn't just happen overnight, and there were many complaints on one particular property, and it still did not change the situation here. I am concerned that we are not being more proactive to stop that kind of thing. I just got a few more questions here. All of the areas that you showed us that are win-wins, a good deal of them have high-density housing. You don't see a lot of commercial, a lot of retail, but what we're doing is is blighting property and having more high density. My real concern about that is, is that we all know that there's a loophole in 1427, and when you are in a URA and it's established that it's blighted, you can actually circumvent that, the intention of 1427. As a council, I think that we really need to think that through and address that at some point. I know that we're going to have a study session on it. But and if you are really looking at increasing the the scope and the area of your URA, URA, we also need to take into account what's actually going to be going up there. Because oftentimes, you know, we have a sense of who's looking at it. Thank you.
Commissioner Labear.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, I just wanted to just make a few comments. Thank you, Robert, for the presentation. Obviously, I've been a big supporter and advocate of expanding our urban renewal area, and so has Councilor Vincent, and part of the reason, or a big part of the reason why we've been supportive of this is because that increment that you were talking about, you know, we really want to see that kind of investment made right here on this side of town in our community. A lot of these areas have gone sort of, you know, under-invested, they haven't had a whole lot of love, and we'd like to see some investment in our infrastructure and that sort of thing. And we know that capturing some of that increment is is how we can get there. And, you know, some of the developments and stuff, they're already happening. They're heading this way with or without some of this, but we know that having the urban renewal and having that potential increment and having that capacity to bond could all really. and having that capacity to bond, uh, could all really help with increasing amount of investment uh, in this side of town. I did want to just, uh, make a few comments, um, regarding property maintenance codes. I know that's unrelated to discussion today, but, uh, it is related to blight generally. Uh, obviously we've had opportunities to add the ICC's property maintenance codes. Uh, we haven't taken that up as council. I've been advocating for that for a few years and I would continue to advocate, uh, for us taking a look at that. Um, I know Counselor Abel this year did bring up, uh, talking about fees for, um, you know, properties that are remaining, uh, sort of unutilized. Um, and, and I also just want to comment a little bit on the, the growth initiative thing. Um, we are going to be having discussions, uh, more about that, uh, coming up. I think, um, you know, it doesn't actually, the, the law that the voters approved, uh, doesn't actually mention urban renewal areas. Uh, you know, the council is the one that, uh, made that determination. Uh, so I just wanted to point that out. Uh, it really just speaks to blight generally. Um, but anyway, I am supportive of this. I'm hoping we can move forward and expand, uh, the board and I hope we can get investment, uh, in Ward Two and other parts of the community that need it. So, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Uh, no hands are up and I guess I could do a consensus, consensus check. Is there a consensus to move this forward to the next phase? So I'm getting, looks like yeses, so we do have consensus to move forward with that first part, uh, Mr. Smith. So appreciate that. And then that'll lead us to more discussion further down the road. So thank you very much and thank you to our attorney. Is he still on, Mr. Hoffman? Are you still with us? There you are. Yep, thank you for joining us this evening. I'm sure we'll hear from you in the next few months.
Okay, it was my pleasure. Nice meeting you all.
Great, thank you.
Thank you also for the time on the agenda, Mayor. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I'm sure you'll be glad when you get some respite from council. Council chairs, anything, any updates on council, city council, Lakewood council committees? Counselor Springsteen, you don't chair a committee? Just FYI?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that I'm being texted that somebody was trying to get in again tonight and had pressed star nine. And she was unable to speak during public comment. So I just want to make a record of that as I do every week. I don't know why it's a problem, but it is.
Okay, so I'll just let the record reflect. We had two opportunities. I gave ample time and gave, uh, plenty of time for folks to raise their hand. Um, I think, you know, what we've discovered is other communities actually have a sign up for public comment prior to city council meetings and, and maybe council wants to go that route. That way folks can sign up early and we know to look for them. So we can try to signal that out, uh, during the section if you signed up prior to try to, to call this, but there were two folks in and, uh, was asked to raise their hands and, and that name or that phone number was not in either of the public input portions. Counselor Franks.
He said she couldn't even, she couldn't even get into the meeting at first and then couldn't raise her hand, so.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Franks.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. Um, I just wanted to kind of speak to that topic since after our last meeting, we did have a, uh, uh, an attendee who was unable to, um, to raise their hand to speak. And we were able to have a conversation and determine that was not a technological challenge. That was just some confusion on the caller's part about how the Zoom meeting worked. And so we had some really good productive meetings, a follow-up call. Um, I've been working with, um, our city clerk and, uh, going through the process. Very intensive process to come up with all kinds of ways in which to improve the process. But I just wanted the community to know that certainly I appreciate that the one caller took the opportunity to reach out to me. It led to some really good productive, uh, information where then we could take that forward and, uh, come up with what I think is a plan to improve the process. But there was no technological issue that, uh, we were able to determine and conclusively determine that. So I just wanted to put all that out there. It's not that we're not working hard on that and we'll certainly continue always to make improvements. But I just wanted to make sure the record reflected that that was not an issue with the technology or with our operation of the meeting. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Protem Skilling.
Let's briefly follow up to the two of you on that point. Uh, back in the good old days of 2019, we did do signups, uh, when we were in person. And then you were announced each time. So I don't think that would be a radical shift. In fact, it could just, and, and you could do it both ways. Have a sign up upfront and then A, just like we did in person, anyone who didn't sign up, here's now your chance. That's, this is do it how we used to do it, uh, in person.
Ten-four. Are there any committee reports? Kind of got a little bit off track there.
I, I wanted to make a record as well since Counselor Franks did. Can I do that?
Sure, Counselor.
So, um, what I'm being told is, and this is a person who calls into Denver City Council meetings on a weekly basis. This is not a technologically unsound person. And so I just want the record to reflect that let's not put down our people who are trying to call in and having trouble as being too stupid to call in because that's not what's happening. And the other thing is she is saying there needs to be a number or link to every page that concerns city council meetings because it is confusing in person and online. And also if we're going to put yet another barrier where now people have to sign in to speak, doesn't sound like it's solving the problem, sounds like it's making it worse. Thanks.
So, yeah, so actually it, it is helpful because by signing up early, as what we found out last week, we would have known that that caller wanted to speak not only on Lakewood Speaks, but also wanted to speak that evening. And we would have been able to find a way. So it's actually much more helpful and something we're going to move towards to make it more convenient for folks to communicate with the city council. Uh, Counselor Franks.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Paul. Um, I do have a, uh, a committee report, but I first wanted to, to make sure our community knows we do not judge the different technological, uh, you know, that is absolutely, um, unfounded, off the table. We want everyone to be able to call in, to be able to participate. And so I want to make sure that no one thinks that I in any way have ever disparaged the different, that's just offensive. And so I certainly wanted to make that statement first and foremost. Uh, the second piece is, uh, I just want the community to be aware that we do have volunteer positions open uh, for, uh, the LAC. I think we also have noxious weed and potentially historic preservation. But always look online for the boards and commissions open page, the current openings. Um, for those that want to participate, it's a great way to get involved. You'll work with fellow, uh, residents who are passionate about their community. And we certainly are looking forward to filling those seats in the next, uh, uh, session that we hold. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, seeing no other updates, I will adjourn this, uh, study session of August 2nd. Harrison, is your hand up?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I, I'm sorry. I, I thought we were going to do, uh, ward, uh, reports as well. Um, so I was just wanted to make.
I let it get out of control because this is supposed to be just council reports on study session nights. So that's what I'd like to.
Oh, okay, but can we announce our ward meetings?
I mean, sure.
Ward five meeting this Saturday, 9:00 AM, West Woods Community Church. Thank you.
All right. Saying nothing else, I will adjourn the meeting at 7:57 PM. Thank you.
Excuse me, um, may I talk about the Ward One meeting? It's also this Saturday? It looks like you're all still in.